Okay, good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, September 26, 2023. The time is 9:00 a.m. We're here for a regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Joe Nevs?
Here.
Richard Valley?
Here.
Doug Verboen? Rusty Robinson?
Here.
Richard Fagundes?
Here.
Thank you. Next is invocation from Pastor Tyler Jones. I'm Neil Church. Good morning, sir. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me. Father, we just thank you for who you are. We thank you that in your word it says, "Even though I walk through the darkest valley, we will fear no evil," because you are with us this morning. I pray over the board and everyone attending here, God, that they would have peace of mind as they begin to discuss certain topics that might add a little tension and a little stress. I pray that there would be a peace in this room, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Hey, thank Pastor. Please join us.
All right, next up is unscheduled appearances. Before we get going on the speaker cards first, County Council has remarks you'd like to make.
Yes, at last week's Board of Supervisors meeting during public comment, a member of the public seeking office addressed the board to provide campaign-related information. After the chairman of the boards questioned whether such speech was permissible at its meeting, and I agreed to research the question, having now more fully considered the issue, I'd like to make it clear on the record that campaign-related activities are not permitted at the county's Board of Supervisors meeting. Not only is the county required from using resources to support political campaigns, but political campaign activities are not within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors, making them inappropriate topics for public comment. Thank you.
Hey, thank Council. Thanks for taking the time to look into that. We'll start with speaker cards first.
I have no written correspondence, but the first speaker card is Yvette Chides Villarreal.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning, Board. Thank you all so much for again allowing us to be here. And my public comment today is just for the record. We are here once again asking you all to consider simultaneous interpretation services. And I know that Chairman Vaya has already addressed this, but we do just want to continue to have it be on the record that we are seeking this service to be implemented soon. This is the fifth week in a row. Last week, my colleague mentioned it was the third. It was actually the fourth. So now we are here for the fifth week in a row, asking for simultaneous interpretation services for all members of the public who do not speak English or who are not English dominant and wish to participate in these meetings. My second request is, just for the record again, we are still looking forward to meeting with you, Supervisor Vaya, as you wanted to do in regards to our requests for the ARBA committee members and the past meeting notes and all that. Thank you so much.
For the record, I called you back and said, "Let's meet." And I sent the email to me, and I've got everything ready to go. Matter of fact, we got time today if you want to stick around until after the close session. Okay? All right. Thank you. That sound, the clerk said that they're cutting concrete in the chamber next door, so if it gets loud, just roll with us. Catherine said that's a sound of progress.
It is.
Okay. Okay. So anybody else wishing to make?
I actually have another speaker card. Jeff Mora.
It's like a whoopee cushion is what it is. Morning, gentlemen. Thank you for having me. My name's Jeff Mora. I live on Charlie Chambers Drive. Happy to see you guys again. Every time I come here, I want to thank you guys for doing what you're doing and sitting up there representing your constituents today. I want to represent the John Birch Society because we teach the Constitution. I just wanted to tell you a little bit about the power that you all have of nullification, which is maybe not something that you utilize all that much, but I wanted to remind you of this power because nullification is something that the Constitution tells you that you have to do when you come across federal powers that delegate only specific state delegates only specific enumerated powers to the federal government. The states and the counties, we, the people, hold the power, retain all that power. And James Madison affirmed this fact. If you've ever read the Federalist Papers, in number 45, he writes that nullification under Article 6 is a duty, not just an option. It declares that state legislators, county officials, executives, and judges shall be bound by oath or affirmation to support the Constitution in the face of federal overreach, which state officials is faithful to his oath. The one who acquiesces to the usurpation, who is the one who resists? Clearly, the latter. Now, nullification today, I just want to talk to you about gun control, which is coming down from the state. Multiple states have enacted measures, including California, trying to nullify federal gun control. The Federal Reserve, there's dozens of states that have enacted legislation bypassing the Fed and enforcing the Constitution's monetary provisions. And local sheriffs are key to resisting federal usurpations. For example, many sheriffs have nullified federal gun control laws, and during COVID, they protected Americans from tyrannical restrictions. Just want to keep that in mind as we move forward. Thank you very much for your time, gentlemen. Keep up the good work.
That's all the speaker cards that I have as their hand raised.
Okay, anybody else in the chambers which are making the schedule? Nope. Okay, moving along. That takes us to the set counter. We got a large amount of items today that have been printed publicly on the agenda.
Actually, Chairman, can you go back up to the approval of the minutes?
Sorry.
Thank you.
That noise is throwing me off. Approval of the minutes. Item A, report out of closed session from regular meeting for September 19, 2023. Council, you got anything?
There's nothing to report.
Item B, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting for September 19, 2023. Chair, entertain a motion.
Go move. Second.
Motion by Verboen, second by Fagundes. Madam Clerk?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Item passes five in favor. Moving on the consent counter, there's no questions or comments from the board. Chair, entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion by Robinson, second by Verboen. Madam Clerk?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Item passes five in favor. Thank you. Onto the regular agenda items. We have two today. First one, item A, comes from the Fire Department. Morning, Chief Lynch.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Bill Lynch, Kings County Fire Department.
Yes, sir.
My pleasure this morning to bring two items for your board. First one is the apologize supervisor Nevs, a retroactive purchase of a Dexter washer extractor. What this unit is, it's what cleans our turnout gear. You know, in the involvement of structured fires, there's a lot of carcinogens produced from the smoke and the ash and these things. And so to get these materials out of the firefighter's turnouts, we have to wash and extract them. We've had an extractor in the agency for quite a few years. We've started having a lot of problems with it. Just recently, we had a pretty major failure of it. Wasn't cost effective to repair it. So we went ahead and actually, on an emergency, purchased a foster extractor, again, to maintain our carcinogen removal program. So we're using the pass-through funding from Cal OES to purchase this equipment. So I'm here this morning to ask you to retroactively authorize the purchase of the Dexter 2400 and adopt the budget change. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Anything for the chief?
There are no questions or comments. Move for approval. Verboen, second.
Motion by Fagundes, second by Verboen. Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Well, you could find one.
Yeah, yeah, it was pretty simple. The company that does our repair is actually found in the town. So, yeah, he had a line on it, and they got it here quickly. So it's installed and working.
Good work. Item passes five in favor. One more item, chief?
Thank you. Yes, my next item. One of the benefits of this pass-through funding that we received through Cal OES was that we were able to start looking at our service delivery in a little bit different fashion. So one of the things is our rescue systems that we utilize when we are dealing with traffic accidents and large-sized vehicles. And we have this project or this program in our agency already, Rescue 42 DAX. What they are is they're vehicle stabilization supports, and they look like a big L bracket, but they are sized to actually secure vehicles should it be on its side or upside down. So firefighters can safely extricate people or work amongst the vehicles. So the funding that we're utilizing again is the pass-through funding to purchase this, and this will give us a pretty standardized approach to rescue stabilization throughout the whole county. So I'm really glad and really happy to be up here this morning to talk about these systems. But what I would ask is that you authorize the purchase of the one C or, excuse me, CTC Rescue Strut kit, which there are two separate types, and then authorize the purchase of one Rescue 42 combination kit, and then adopt the budget change. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments?
Second.
Motion by Robinson, second by Verboen. Madam Clerk?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Item passes five in favor. Thank you, chief. Next up, item B comes Public Works Department. Morning, Mr. Cabrera.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mitchell Cabrera, chief engineer with the Public Works Department. The first item I have before your board this morning is a recommendation to award the construction project for the Stratford Levy Construction Contract to Kroker Incorporated. July of this year, we were before your board with the plans and specifications to advertise the document. On August, the bids closed. We had five contractors interested in the project. One of them was disqualified for not having the correct paperwork. Kroker Inc. was the lowest responsive responsible bidder, and their bid amount is just over 1 million. So it's 1,1,726. The scope of the project that we would like to award is approximately one mile segment of the Stratford Levy to be raised up roughly 2.5 feet from the Mantica alignment from 18th Avenue to 17th Avenue. The project is scheduled for 45 working days, and the funding for this project is from the state. So it is currently in the March 2023 budget allocation. So the recommendation from the department is to award the construction project to Kroker Incorporated. Questions?
Is he going to be ready for the winter?
Hopefully.
All right.
If winter doesn't happen within 45 days?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. All right.
I have a question. Sue Robinson, what elevation are we bringing it up to?
It's 180, 185, 186 to 188.
Are there other segments that still need attention?
The portion that this levy would connect to, it does need some attention, the portion that's being raised up. It would essentially connect to what the other property owners have raised up already. It'll kind of be a continuation of that elevation.
Thank you.
But the short answer is there is some other areas, but this is the longest segment that needs attention. But there are a couple of other areas that are going to be, at some point, need to be raised to that 188 elevation. They have seconds with no change orders?
No promises.
That's why they get you.
Motion by Verboen, second by Nev. Madam Clerk?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson? Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Item passes five in favor. One more item. Mr. Cabrera?
Yes, the second item before your board this morning is a request to approve a subdivision improvement agreement for the county track 936, phases eight and nine in Armona. The tentative track map 936 was approved by the Kings County Advisory Agency, August 21 of this year. And the purpose of this agreement is for the developer, Aspire Homes California, will be allowed to begin construction on the Armona tracks, creating an additional 109 lots for the community of Armona. And the purpose of the agreement is for the developer to construct street improvements, curb gutter, sidewalk in Armona. And as part of the agreement, county costs for these improvements will be generated through a zone of benefit that will be brought before your board at a later date to provide the COPOs cough and also provide some of the key figure year. So the recommendation for the board is to approve subdivision improvement agreement with Aspire Homes for the track 936, eight and nine. Questions?
Thanks, sir. Anything for Mr. Cabrera?
Go move.
Motion by Fagundes? Second by Verboen. Madam Clerk?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Hi.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
All right, that takes us to board member announcements. Thank you. Supervisor Nevs, you ready?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Continue to watch the Tulare Lake continues to drop about anywhere from three to four. Talk about it being completely gone, but it really depends on the fall. Storm coming in. Just have to see what happens in the future. On September 20, the county-wide oversight board had their meeting and approved the recognized obligation payment schedule, the ROPS adjustment from the city of Lamore, and it was approved. And thank you, Eric, for doing that. We had a little bit of trouble getting a forum, but we made it. That night, a meeting of the Kings Federal Credit Union Supervisors Meeting got together, and we reviewed documents and went over the audit. The credit union still has a five-star rating, which rates all financial institutions, both banks and credit unions. So everything's on Thursday, September 21, a group of us got together and barbecued 100 tri-tips for Native American Day at Santa Rosa Rancheria. The day is to share Native American history with students from Central Union and members of the community. A special thanks to Richard Fagundes, John Martin, Jim Kilner, and Bill Lynch. Thank you for being there. I think some of the relationships we have with the tribe go through the fire department. We certainly want to thank those two that not only talk about years, but really decades of service. Greg Martella, John Devlin and his wife, and my wife Kathy, all helped out. And so certainly want to thank everyone for that. I was also remiss in last week not thanking the Kings County Parks and the support of the senior day in the park. The park looked wonderful. I've had an opportunity to talk with several of the vendors, as well as some of the seniors that were there, and they really appreciated that day. And they were really impressed when the park looked and everything looked out. Certainly want to thank them, Dominic, and thank them for all the dedication and support, as well as the Commission on AIDS. On Thursday night, a meeting of the South Fork Kings was held at the Lamore City Council Chambers. Another 218 election will be held with ballots being counted on November 16. A $10 and 10 cent per acre assessment for a five-year term will be on that ballot. And we also reviewed information regarding well pumping, as well as probationary hearing that will happen sometime in the future. They're supposed to give us 90 days notice. So, yeah, we're not sure exactly when that will be held. We were thinking it was going to be either November, December, but they're already in that time range, so that pushes it back to January or February. But we'll have 90 days to get ready for it, and they continue to meet every two weeks to get ready. Kathy and I attended the American Legion Post Breakfast on Friday, September 22. Nice event. And then the appreciation lunch was held at the Stratford Portuguese Hall on Sunday for everyone that helped out with the 2023 Portuguese celebration. And then on yesterday, Monday, September 25, the meeting was held, or regular meeting was held, of the Kings County Behavioral Health Advisory. There's going to be some revisions to the bylaws to kind of connect it more with some of what the state laws have updated. And so we're going to, that'll be coming before this morning. We also held a public hearing regarding the prevention and intervention of the Health Services Act, the three-year plan. We certainly want to thank staff for helping us get through that. And then there was also a subcommittee established to review the data notebook. The data notebook is an annual report that was put together to outline all of the services Kings County does, as well as compare them to the other areas of the state. So that was also put together. With that, thank you very much.
Thanks, supervisor Nevs. Do you have a tri-tip of wood or a bunch of charcoal?
No, no, we always use stolen wood for the, which is stolen from the sheriff's department because that way we burn the evidence.
Ah, we got some good wood? Which got some oak?
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, no, no, no. We had a nice hot fire, you know. Everybody at Fagundes thought, oh, you don't have enough wood in there. You know, but we were able to cook some of those tri-tips pretty fast, so it worked out well. And, yeah, by using hot wood, that just makes the fire accelerate a little faster.
I like it. It burned the evidence.
It burned the evidence, so, yeah. But it was kind of a combination. We had oak, we had some pine, we had, yeah, we had, we had everything. So we're not, we're not choosy. It's pretty hard to be choosy when you're out there at night stealing the wood, I mean, borrowing the wood.
All right, Sue Fagundes, yes. Sue Verboen, welcome back.
Last week traveled to Monterey for the rural county rural conference. This week I have a Tulare Lake Conference coming up on Wednesday night, Thursday, in Home of Freddy.
Oh, wow. Where's that at? Oh, Basalay? Sue Robinson?
A lot of ditto on what Supervisor Verboen just said. Last week, RCRC Annual Conference, spoke of everything from bike trails to fentanyl. Also had the pleasure of hearing from a lady who was part of the Boston bombing, and she was one of the survivors. So she was a pretty inspiring character that we got to listen to. And then attended the St. Rose McCarthy Dinner the next night. And so, like Supervisor Verboen said, upcoming is the San Joaquin Valley Conference, so.
Thank you. Good work. Last Wednesday, I want to thank Abraham and the sheriff deputies who led us on the county fan boat. We went and checked on the lake as well, and it was a really good perspective from being in the helicopter with the sheriff or just driving by it to be able to get on that fan boat and move around. And it was, it was an experience just to see it from that level, especially one of the things that we saw was an orchard of trees that the tops of the trees now are visible above the water. The deputies that were driving the boat said two weeks ago, they were driving over that same area and didn't realize they were going over an orchard of trees. And so when you see the, what they call the irrigation lines, the black water lines that, you know, on the ground when the trees are getting planted, so water raises them up. Now that the water's coming down, you see the irrigation lines tangled in all the treetops of the orchard of trees. And so it's still, it's still, still challenges out there, but just seeing the water level drop as it continues to, as Nevs mentioned. So thanks again to the deputies, too. And thanks, Sheriff, for letting us go out there, too. I also want to, let's see, on Thursday, I met with some home garden leadership, Mr. Harold Reed, and Lydia Ritchie, who's now the new home garden community service district director. And, you know, Matthew's been working closely with her on getting some issues in home garden, some financial issues squared away, and a lot of work there with some record keeping. So I want to thank him for that as well. So I want to thank him for that as well. And so we sat down and prioritized for the next year some of the things Home Garden's looking for some help in and working together with the county. So with that, I'll go to CAO Martinez.
So for board correspondence, the board received correspondence regarding application from the alcoholic beverage license on September 25. The board also received correspondence from Attorney Alex Dominguez regarding the Ridgewater District election date of September 21. For upcoming event this Thursday, there will be a resource fair on September 28 at the Reef Sunset Middle School in Avonale from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. There will be giveaways, free food, entertainment. The Sarah Mooney Museum will host Legends of Lemur Cemetery Walk on September 30 at 9 and at 10:30 a.m. There will be a free smog repair event on September 30 from 8:00 to 12:00 at the Avonale High School. Miller Links for Life Pink Fashion Picnic will be on Tuesday, October 17, in the Hanford Civic. Doors open at 10:30. Tickets are 35 and must be purchased in advance. And lastly, there will be a free Kings County Public Safety event that will take place on Thursday, October 19, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Kettleman City Park. For upcoming agenda items for next week, October 3, administration has 14 items. 11 are regarding claims for damages, one's regarding amendment with Home Garden Community Service District on utility arrears, and the presentation employee of the second quarter. Behavioral Health has an item regarding MOU regarding medication-assisted treatment in jails and drug courts. Community Development has an item regarding property owner, land conservation Williamson Act contracts. HR has three items, two regarding a side letter with the Detention Deputies Association, and third is updating salary resolution. Human Services Agency has an item regarding Kings County five-year system improvement plan. JTO has an agreement with EDD for telephone service, and probation has an item regarding discharge for accountability delinquent or ordered. And lastly, Sheriff has two items for advanced step higher in approval of firearm purchases. That concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, that takes us, the board will be going into closed session, and a couple items take up will stand adjourned until Tuesday, October 3, 2023, at 9:00 a.m. Right back here. And then Housing Authority today, too, right at 1:30 p.m. at the Housing Authority office. Thank you, everybody.